This afternoon. The response email did not include any answers, but instead requested the planning commission to eliminate duplicate questions and categorize the questions. This continued lack of timely engagement and good faith effort is a significant concern for our due diligence process. During our review, we have identified many instances of incomplete and incorrect information. These deficiencies relate to the mandatory requirements of the White River Township ordinance and also Act 233 as well. One key example of this deficiency is the applicant has chosen to ignore our Crio, our compatible renewable energy ordinance, and disregard our renewable energy overlay requirement as stated in subsection 29 of section 1606 of the law. We understand the applicant's in their November 26 letter expressed frustration about having to respond to our follow-up questions. To be clear, this commission finds it significantly more frustrating to spend time repairing valid, necessary, and technical questions on a project of this magnitude because the application contained missing, incomplete, or incorrect information. The applicant also mentions in the letter of November 26 that they are acting in good faith, yet 90% of the responses are addressed with a standard reply that Act 233 does not require them to supply information. A standard uninformant response that simply states that it's not required does not demonstrate good faith and does not substitute for the necessary technical information required by our Crio. Furthermore, such a response does not take a tremendous amount of time to repair. The planning commission is charged with a huge decision that will change the character and the structure of our entire township. It is important that we understand the full scope of this complex project so that we can make an informed decision. We have scheduled presentations from several subject matter experts and consultants, three of which are speaking today. We look forward to hearing from them and several others at the December 16 regular planning commission meeting and reviewing the detailed reports in the coming weeks ahead. While we recognize that substantial portions of the submitted application remain missing, incomplete, or vague, the planning commission is committed to making a decision within the statutory timeline provided under 233. We intend to utilize our full statutory time provided to us. A significant portion of this time is already elapsed. We therefore expect the applicant to respond to our requests for information properly and comprehensively to ensure that we can meet the necessary deadline while performing our due diligence for the White River Township restings. I will now proceed.
Thank you. My name is Leslie Zabatta. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Michigan, and I am the owner of Civil Engineering Solutions. I have 30 years in site development and site plan reviews in the state of Michigan. And I'm here tonight as a follow-up from the November 18 planning commission to go over the questions that we get from the applicant. Myself and my colleague, Stu, and Lou McKenna, who do not be here tonight, we had a lengthy list of questions. So for those of you who were here at that meeting, this will be somewhat repetitive, and we'll also respond with an abbreviated response that we received from the applicant. So, and we are here tonight representing the applicant. All right, here's my... So a detailed look at the project area. We reviewed this at the last meeting. The area in red is the land control area. In the green are the proposed solar arrays, the ITC substation, and the best area. And the ITC substation and best area are located at the south end of the project on Eilers Road. All right, there's one up in this area here. So this was a blow-up in the original application of the ITC substation area. The substation are at the north end. Eilers Road is road here in this area. And this was the best, proposed best area, the battery storage. A detailed look at the floodplain. There's a significant amount of floodplain, as many of you know, associated with the Pearson Swamp Drain. And, so again, the area in red is the land control area. The yellow is the proposed solar arrays, the best facility in the ITC substation. And the white blue, you can see, is the 100-year floodplain. And there are some proposed solar arrays within the floodplain area currently shown on the application. Regulations, Public Act 233 of, this is 2023, shifts the authority to the Michigan Public Service Commission unless the community adopts a compatible renewable energy ordinance. White River Township has adopted a Crio. So now I'm going to go through the questions and the answers from the applicant. So, as previously stated, additional information is needed for us to properly evaluate the application. Because of that, McKenna and CBS developed questions to solicit answers from the applicant. As Lauren stated, we received the answers to the questions last Wednesday, November 26. And the Township Planning Commission also provided additional questions on November 21. And I prepared this earlier today, not knowing that they received a response, but that was received earlier today, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, the first question was the applicant... Application indicates that Lakeside Solar has entered into lease agreements and one purchase agreement to achieve the land control. That the lease and purchase agreement's been signed, and when can the township receive those? So the abbreviated response from Lakeside Solar is, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, the referenced agreements have been signed and a participating parcel list is provided in Appendix A to the application. Lakeside has provided the agreements on November 26. However, we have not had the opportunity to review all of those agreements, but we did receive those from the applicant. And I did want to point out too, we, I abbreviated Lakeside's response because we're already about 30 slides tonight. The township did receive a full response. It will be part of the public packet from this meeting, and they also have copies if any residents would like to see the full response. Question two, has the applicant obtained copies of the farmland development rights agreements for the nine parcels as disclosed on pages 55 and 56 of the application? When can the township receive them? And are the property owners aware that they may lose their tax incentives? Lakeside's response is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233. Question three, has the applicant evaluated the land coverage requirements in the township ordinance? I'm gonna, I'm gonna condense this a little bit. Again, the response is that it is their opinion this is not a requirement of Act 233. Question four, has the applicant provided all the background information on the alternative site analysis? This is a requirement of Public Act 233, and I cite the section on here. And their response is that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, and it is specifically noted that the inclusion of an overly district means that the township's local zoning ordinance is not a Crio as defined by Public Act 233. Notwithstanding that fact, the detailed alternatives analysis is contained in section 2.1.1 in Appendix A of the application. It was our opinion that this section was lacking detailed information, and that is why it was on the question list to begin with. Question six, does the applicant have a site plan and details for the best area, and when will these be provided? We cite the section of Public Act 233 this requirement. The response is the best location is depicted on the submitted site plan. Without limiting the foregoing and response to the request for additional information, please see the attached site plan supplement. I will show the audience that supplement information we received from Lakeside on November 26 at the, towards the end of the slide show. Item seven, does the applicant have a site plan and details for the ITC area? When will these be provided? We cite the Public Act 233 requirement. Lakeside Solar's opinion is that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, the proposed location of the off-site utility interconnection is shown on the site plan, is my opinion, and is not shown adequately on the site, site plan that was presented. Question number eight, it appears as though there is a discrepancy in the acreage of the project in the application documents. Overall, we could not, we found that there was a discrepancy of about 270 acres. The applicant responded that remaining 216.7 acres is the area between fence lines of the project facilities and the land control area boundary. Nine, can the applicant add property lines, participating acreage, non-participating acreage, civil numbers, owner info, and zoning to the plan? That's very standard when developing civil engineering plans on any project in the state of Michigan that have owner information, property lines, that sort of thing. Lakeside's response is that, or their opinion is that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, and it is specifically noted that the inclusion of an overly district means that the township's local zoning ordinance is not a Crio is defined. Okay, notwithstanding that fact, the detailed alternative analysis is contained in section 2.1.1 in Appendix F of the application. It is worth noting that the township has already in its possession all the relevant zoning information, tax parcel maps, and similar property information related to properties located within the boundaries. That said, these details are provided in map A in Appendix G. And see also attached supplementary information. Item 10, can the applicant add all bearings and distances to the properties and property lines? That's pretty much your legal description of your parcels, the meets and bounds, so we can tell where the entire boundary of each of these parcels. Throughout the plan set, it's difficult to ascertain the property lines, the areas that are proposed within the project, the land control area, because some of the properties still maintain residences, that the residents will not be included in the land control area. So plans are just very difficult to tell which part of the parcel is which. So their response to question 10 is that their opinion is that this question is not a requirement of Act 233. And further relevant segment distances have been provided, so the purpose and relevancy of this request is unclear and requires further explanation from the township. Without limiting the foregoing, the site plan scale is provided so that any unspecified distance can be determined by scale. Question 11, equipment has not been specified. Has the applicant decided on the equipment to be used throughout the project, and when will this information be provided to the township? Lakeside's response is their opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, equipment specifications assumed in the preliminary design are described in Section 3 of the application. My opinion is Section 3 of the application is vague on the equipment that is proposed for the site. We're looking for dimensions, we're looking for height, width, that type of thing, and those details were absent in the application other... It was cited to the effect of that they will not exceed 25 feet in height, which is a public Act 233 requirement. There is a height limitation, but what exactly is proposed is not, still not there. Item 12, has the applicant had any meetings or correspondence with the fire department to develop a site-specific emergency response plan and fire response plan? Their response, Section 311 describes Lakeside's operations and emergency action plan provided in Appendix G. And Section 4.10 describes Lakeside's coordination with local first responders. Item 13, page 25 of the application states some components are up to 35 feet in height. However, there are no details within the site plans showing any proposed structures up to 35 feet in height. Is this applicant proposing any buildings or components over 25 feet tall? There is a height limit in Public Act 233. And Lakeside's response is equipment specifications assumed in the preliminary design, including the height of facilities, are described in Section 3 of the application. Question 14, the application indicates that there will be construction trailers in the lay-down areas, but the plans do not indicate any trailers. How many construction trailers are proposed, and where are they proposed? What is the duration that the construction trailers are proposed to remain on site? Lakeside's response is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement in the Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, the use of construction trailers will occur during the period of construction, which is currently estimated to last for 12 to 18 months, but no details on the number or location. Question 15, what are the limits of the tree removal plans? Lakeside's response, areas of tree removal are provided on the civil permitting plan in Appendix B as vegetation to be removed. Question 16, are any landmark trees proposed to be removed? And is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233? Item 17, when will stormwater management plans be submitted to the township? Stormwater management is a requirement of Public Act 233, and this section is cited from the state law. Lakeside's opinion is, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing coordination with the county has been initiated and is ongoing. Given the small area of impervious surface, no drainage impacts are anticipated, so no mitigation is proposed. I completely disagree with this. It's very clear in the state law that stormwater management is required, and even adding compacted gravel driveways in the amount of 20 acres and the best site and the ITC substation, there is a significant amount of impervious area. So impervious area is essentially hard surface. It's building, it's asphalt, it's hard, compacted gravel. What that means is the stormwater cannot infiltrate the ground in those areas, very different than farmland, right? You have open lands that the rainwater falls down, it can infiltrate into the ground, eventually run off depending on your soil types. This is a very important thing to, in my opinion, to note as a civil engineer. The, the response, I don't feel is correct or adequate or meets Public Act 233. Question 18, how much grading is proposed throughout the development project area? Where are the grading plans? It is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, Section 3.8 of the application provides construction information relative to grading and excavation. Question 19, will topsoil be proposed to be removed? If so, where will the topsoil be stored? How will it be stored to prevent it from eroding away or within the county drain? And Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without the limiting foregoing, Sections 3.8.2.2, 3.8.3.4, I might have heard it wrong. Several sections were cited to discuss the soil handling procedures that we'll be implementing during construction. And again, these are all abbreviated responses. They're, they're much lengthier in the document that was submitted back to the township. Question 20, can the location of existing farm tiles be noted on the plans? Why isn't the replacement of farm tiles included in the decommissioning plan? So decommissioning plans are required as part of Public Act 233. The point of a decommissioning plan is that one day if the solar array, the solar farms don't exist, that the land can be returned to farming, while farm tiles are a critical component of farming. And so this was, in my opinion, an important thing to note in the decommissioning plan. Lakeside's response is their opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, and they cite the sections of the application that address this. 21, why are there solar arrays and other equipment within the regulated floodplain? It is a FEMA regulated floodplain. How many solar arrays are proposed to be within regulated floodplanes? What other equipment is proposed to be within the regulated floodplanes? And when will the site plans be modified to remove the solar arrays and other equipment from the floodplain? Lakeside's response is, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting, without limiting the foregoing, a detailed discussion of proposed solar facility infrastructure that would be located within floodplain, including a discussion of the regulatory approvals and mitigation measures that would be implemented to mitigate floodplain impacts are provided in a couple of sections of the application. So, you know, the difference between a floodplain and a wetland, you know, wetland has different criteria that is defined by the state of Michigan, and floodplain is area that is identified a floodway or flooding that does occur and has occurred due to various conditions. Sometimes it's the size of the drain, sometimes culverts are undersized, basically causing a backwater effect in a larger floodplain. So, a floodplain and a floodway, you're going to see water. There are a significant number of solar arrays currently proposed in the plan within the regulated floodplain. And I see that as just being an issue with an electrical component being located within a floodway. I just wanted to take a minute to explain that a little bit more. Okay. So, question 22, what are the boundaries of the Pearson Swamp Drain easement? And what are the limitations with this, in this easement? County drains have associated easements with them. The response is the civil permitting plan in Appendix B shows the drain easement. It is not identified on the plans as the drain easement. There's a drain, the drain is shown, there's an area shown, but it is not labeled or identified. What is the easement? Typically, any improvement in an agency's easement, for example, the construction of solar arrays would be prohibited by the county drain office within their easement, along with any other easements on these properties. So the plans do not show existing easements. Question 23, would the applicant obtain title work for all of the development area properties? If so, are there existing easements other than the Pearson Swamp Drain? If there are other existing easements, when will the site plan be updated to show these easements? When will the township receive the title work? As many of you know, if you go on county records, it may show one owner, but pulling title work is where you find who really owns the land. The reason why, in my opinion, that's important is so that the township can review that information compared with the application and the lease agreements to ensure that whoever's signing these agreements, they own the property, et cetera. Okay. Lakeside's response, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, easement locations are shown as approximate locations based on readily available desktop GIS publicly available spatial data within the footprint of the facility. Question 24, why does the landscape buffer type 1 detail show an area 30 feet wide? However, the plan's scaled to 20 feet wide. Are any berms proposed within the buffer areas? Lakeside's response, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, see the solar ordinance screening requirements on sheet L100 of the civil plans in Appendix B. Earth and berms are included in the vegetative screening plans described on this sheet. Question 25, why will animals be used for vegetation management when the state of Michigan requires pollinator plants? The animals was in the vegetation management portion of the application. And how does the application comply with Public Act 233's requirement regarding pollinators? That is part of the public act. Lakeside's response is stated in Section 3 dot E dot 2 of the vegetation management plan provided in Appendix G of the application. Lakeside may consider the use of grazing animals to maintain vegetation during operation of the project. This is an optional consideration. The project will include plantings to comply with the Michigan Pollinator Habitat Planning Scorecard for solar sites developed by MSU Department of Entomology in effect on February 27th of '24, or any applicable successor standards. The seed mix used to establish pollinator plantings shall not include invasive species as identified by the Midwest Invasive Species Information Network led by researchers at the MSU Department of Entomology and supporting regional partners. In addition, the project will comply with any pollinator plantings as required relative to Public Act 116 lands. Question 26, have any of the soil borings been completed in the development project area? This question was not directly addressed. Question 27, will the township receive the proposed dimension of the solar arrays? Lakeside's response is, is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, dimensions of the project facilities that are described in Section 3 of the application. As I previously stated, the actual dimensions are not shown. They cite the maximum height, which matches the public Act 233, 25 feet. So I'm gonna go through McKenna's questions as well, and their responses. So, number one, given the land control area occupies 15.6 of the land area of the township and over 40% of open land area, how do you propose to satisfy the master plan goal of preserving township's pastoral setting, rural amenities, open spaces, and scenic beauty? Lakeside's response is, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, project buffer is described in 4.1.1 of the SUP application. Question two, given that 84.9% of the land in the land control areas prime farmland are farmland of local importance, how do you propose to meet the master plan goal of preserving the township farmland base? Lakeside's response is, it is their opinion that this question is not a requirement of Public Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, Section 4.3 of the application describes the agricultural protection. Map 9 of Appendix E of the application depicts farmland within the land control area. Question three, how do you propose to satisfy the purposes of the zoning ordinance which includes protecting the stability of the agricultural economy, the rural character, and open space? Again, Lakeside's response is that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but there's information required, provided in the application. Question four, would solar arrays proposed to approach into floodplanes? How do you propose to satisfy the zoning ordinance purpose which calls for conserving lands, waters, and other natural resources for the most suitable purposes? Lakeside's response, it's their opinion that this is not a requirement of Act 233. Question five, specify how the application meets required findings the planning commission must make to satisfy zoning ordinance requirements for site plan and special land use. It is Lakeside's opinion that this is not a requirement of Act 233. Question six, how do you propose to screen around all solar arrays when Appendix B, civil permitting plans, show only partial screening around homesteads with no screening along roads? Unclear requirement. It's Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Public Act 233, and we provided this information in the application. Question seven, when will real landscape plans be submitted that show in plan view throughout the project and number of species of each proposed plant spacing with dimension and size at the time of planting? Again, it's Lakeside's, it's Lakeside's response that this is not a requirement of Public Act 233. Number eight, when will trees 6 inches and greater in caliper that are proposed for removal be identified by species on a tree identification plan? Lakeside's response is that this is not a requirement of Public Act 233. Nine, what are specifications for suggested additional screening buffer? It is Lakeside's response, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Public Act 233. Number 10, what process will be used and what is the schedule for replacing damaged farm drainage channels? Lakeside's response, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Public Act 233. Question 11, when will detailed exterior lighting specifications be submitted? It is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233. Question 12, what are the specifications for the 3 meters tall buffer on the north side of the best as proposed in the sound modeling assessment? Lakeside's response, it's Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Public Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, final specifications will comply with the assumptions stated in Section 6 of the Sound Monitoring Report, including the .6 absorption coefficient. Question 13, where are the wildlife movement corridors and habitat buffers referred to on page 98 of the special land use application? It is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Public Act 233. Without limiting the foregoing, Section 4.4.5.8 of the application references areas of natural habitat that will remain between blocks of solar arrays, as shown in the detailed site plan in Appendix B. Wildlife movement would not be restricted in the area between the land control area boundary and the fence lines around solar array blocks. Question 14, when will a complete site plan for the best facility be provided showing facade elevations and... showing facade elevations and height dimensions of all structures, septic distance, extent of paving, exterior relations, floor plan, et cetera? This is a requirement of Public Act 233. Lakeside's response, the best location is depicted on the submitted site plan, without limiting the foregoing. In response to the request for additional information, please see the attached, I will get to that, so you can see what was submitted. Question fifteen, why will a solar array detail be provided that shows dimension at full tilt and in horizontal position? This is a requirement of Public Act 233. It's Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233, but without limiting the foregoing, the dimensions of solar panel arrays are provided in Section 3.1 of the application. Question sixteen, when will inverter details be provided that include height with length for the inverter as well as dimension? Lakeside's response, this is, question is not a requirement of Act 233, and they cite this is in the application. Question seventeen, when will the civil engineer, when will the civil drawings be sealed by a civil engineer registered in the state of Michigan? Lakeside's response is that this is not a requirement of Public Act 233, but I can tell all of you that a licensed engineer has to seal any plans going to any permitting agency in the state of Michigan. Question eighteen, and when will the landscape drawings be sealed by a landscape architect registered in the state of Michigan? Again, the response is that this is not a requirement of Act 233. When will the stormwater detention ponds, which are referred to in the special land use application, be shown on the civil plan? Lakeside's response, it is Lakeside Solar's opinion that this question is not a requirement of Act 233. Again, I disagree with this. This is referring to stormwater management, which is clearly identified in Public Act 233. So, this slide shows the supplemental information of the best area in this area here, and they do show a proposed stormwater basin, and there have not been any calculations presented or anything to verify that that size would be adequate for this facility, but this was submitted to the township in response to the questions. And this is all of the information that we have in this area, other than what was in the original application. And then the next couple of slides, this is, this is an example project that my company designed for a site, just to show an example of what I would expect to see on a stormwater management plan. This area here is a parking lot that's proposed, and here, this is a proposed building, you can see the outline. These are the various basins for this site. There's infiltration sediment basin, so typically, you'll have a sediment basin for where the first flush of water would go. And most of the time, what that does is really protect the receiving drain, in this case, the Pearson Swamp Drain, from having a bunch of dirt eroding into that county drain. And then it would connect to a detention basin with a controlled outlet, and then it would be discharged slowly into the receiving body of water, in this case, the county drain. So, I would expect to see something like this ultimately from the applicant, and that has not been received to date. And this next plan is really kind of a blow up of the same project that shows the storm piping from one basin to another, a controlled standpipe structure, and then the pipe outlet into the drain. So, similar situation on this project, there was a floodplain associated this shaded areas of the floodplain, and so the ponds are built upstream of that, but that's just an example for reference. And that concludes my report tonight. Any questions for Leslie?
Question twenty-five.
Which one?
Question twenty-five, on your first presentation, worry about bees, what about grazing sheep underneath these? Michigan State and I have been talking about this. So, are you in favor of it, or are you worried more about the colony?
Okay, I did need to have a whole discussion about this, but thank you all. You could certainly bring that up in public comment.
I couldn't hear you with your mask on.
You could, you're welcome to bring that up in public comment, if you're not starting a discussion at this point.
One of these questions, right there, it says questions. I had a question.
Questions from the planning commission.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Leslie. At this point, I'd like to introduce Dave Francis. Dave and his wife Cindy have been owner-operator Montague Tree Farms since nineteen eighty-one. They have a Christmas tree farm, and it includes landscape design, installation, and maintenance. Dave has a Bachelor of Science in forestry from Michigan State. Some of his inclines include the USDA, City of Muskegon, Whitehall, Montague, Muskegon Soil Conservation District, and Muskegon County Drain Commission. Dave, did you want us to come up here? Oh, Dave is going to be doing his presentation about the screening in the SOU application.
Okay, so I was asked to take a look at the vegetative screening, the plant materials and details of what they propose and what's involved. So, after reviewing the planning details submitted by Lakeside Solar for vegetative screening, I offer the following observations and suggestions. Choice of planning materials, Lakeside Solar is proposing a limited variety of trees and plants for the screening project. Offering two types of evergreen trees and two types of deciduous trees kind of amounts to a monoculture. I feel like this project needs a diverse group of plants. The ability to choose from a larger group of plants ensures survivability and improved aesthetics, as flowering trees and shrubs have different flowering times and structures. For the evergreen tree choices, they offer black hill spruce and concolorford. Black hill spruce is a logical choice, as it's hardy and grows well in this area. Concolorford, however, is site-specific. It's subject to late spring frost, cannot tolerate heavy soils or waterlogged sites, and prefers a soil pH above six. It's a beautiful tree when sowed, when sited correctly, and it will grow, I've seen it grow on other sites, but it, the main thing about it is it cannot tolerate, it needs to be grown on fruit ground. It breaks bud early, so if it breaks bud and gets a frost, it's done for the year, it will grow next year. So, I kind of think the, there's other trees that are hardy, that should be considered. One of them's white pine. White pine planted on its own really does not self-prune for a long time, so it's a good choice, native tree, tough. Norway spruce, that's the fastest growing spruce in the eastern U.S., well suited to this area. And the other tree that should, evergreen, I feel, is kind of overlooked, is an upright juniper, sometimes known as eastern red cedar. It's beautiful in the summer, and it gets kind of a purple winter color, but it's tough as nails. So, the deciduous trees and shrubs offered by Lakeside Solar are a good choice, but are also rather limited. The only tree that I found questionable on this list was red bud. The native range for red bud is actually, it kind of stops at Ottawa County and Kent County, so we're really kind of at the very northern edge of its natural range. Red bud also prefers a sheltered site, and I feel it will struggle to plant it on an exposed windy site. We put a list together of other trees and shrubs that should be considered for deciduous trees and shrubs. What also should be considered is honey locust, porthorn, flowering dogwood, especially alternate these dogwood, crab apples, and then the following small trees and shrubs should also deserve a look, and that includes serviceberry, witch hazel, viburnums, and Michigan hawley. So, I just think that a diverse group of trees planted along wherever, wherever they're going to be planted would be much more appealing to the eye, plus if you only plant a few, a few species, if there's any kind of disease or insect or any kind of problem goes wrong, you can wipe off a whole group of them. If you have a diverse group, plus they flower at different times in the year, you know, witch hazel flowers about now, truly a nice winter tree. And then I looked at the planting and planting notes. So, the plan calls for three stakes to be used for the upright single-stem evergreen and deciduous trees. Evergreen trees, when planted correctly, do not need to be staked. I mean, I feel we planted a thousand evergreen trees, I can count on one hand the ones we had staked. So, I feel like that requirement is excessive. It's also interesting, is they give the option of an eight-foot stained two-by-two wooden stake that needs to be driven three feet into the ground. They also offer an option of using a metal stake, which is what I feel the township should They ask for staking material, which is poly, inch and a half wide, tied to the tree, but they do not indicate when it should be removed. So, it should be removed at the end of the second growing season to avoid girdling the tree. Plan calls for a three-foot radius of mulch around the plant. This, this will work for shrubs, but for evergreen trees, a lot of times when they're five feet tall, they're already three to four foot in a hammer. So, I believe what should be done is, should ask for a mulch line that extends a foot beyond the drip line of the tree or shrub. You combine this with the three-inch drop basin that they asked for, it ensures that any water that lands in that basin that has mulch around it is going to go to the tree or shrub. The other thing, also required is for the plant material to be planted upon arrival at the site. And I'm assuming that for the amount, the volume of plants and trees to be delivered, they will be delivered by a semi, semi-truck. So, will the semi come to each site and drop them off? I, I think more than likely, they will need a staging area or temporary nursery where the plant material will be staged until it's dispersed to the individual sites, individual areas. Notes also state that any plant not immediately planted shall be healed in. So, I would like to see the township ask Lakeside to indicate where their temporary nursery or staging area is, and I also feel it should be inspected to make sure that the plants are healed in and watered. You know, there's an old saying, you should spend ten dollars planting a one-dollar tree. So, if you take this material and just set it out in the open without covering it, let the wind eat at it for a day or two, anyone that lives out in this area knows what the wind does, it'll dry that tree out in no time. So, the other interesting thing, the planning notes require that each planning site be evaluated to determine if soil amendments are required. The only way I know about determining, you know, what's required is by soil sample. So, does this mean that every site is going to be given a soil sample? Maybe, I don't know. The other thing, the planning notes require a minimum of twelve inch, twelve inches of topsoil for each shrub and tree planted. So, I want to know, would this be tops, would this topsoil be removed from the site excavation? Or are they going to bring in screened topsoil from another source? So, those are just things I noticed from going through the planning notes. And I know on your township, your ordinance, you mentioned the possibility of a berm. If I read that correctly, your description of berm is five feet high, and it drops a foot for each foot you go out. We did the math, and it would require two yards of soil for every lineal foot. That's a lot of soil, but I'm just throwing that out there. The final thing I went through, and this is the thing that took the longest, and discussed it with everyone on the farm, thought back to my meetings in Montague Township, and discussed it with, actually, my son's been involved in these arrays for a long time, about guarantee. So, Lakeside Solar says they want to, want to guarantee the plant material for one year. I, I think the vegetative buffer should be included in the conditional use permit as an integral part. To pull that out and say, I mean, pick and choose and say, well, you know, we're going to adhere to setbacks and, you know, noise ordinance, but we don't want to guarantee the plant material. It just, I don't know. I just think that I've attended enough of these meetings and listened to people, and the main objection that I feel happens to the, with these arrays is the visuals. And so, the vegetative management plan is kind of one of the most important aspects of it. It's kind of the only, in my opinion, the only kind of leeway the township has, there's so many other things that are kind of, the status or whatever, taken out of our, our hands. So, I, I believe the township should, should, the vegetative buffer should be an integral part of the conditional use permit. I also think that the township should recommend, or insist on a hundred percent tree or shrub survival for the first, first three years. After that, the material is established, and then there's some flexibility. So, if a plant or tree dies and is being covered by another, something else covers it, well, then so be it. But if a tree or shrub dies, that's integral to, that's important to screen, it should be replaced. I know that there in other states, the vegetative management plan is part of the ordinance and has to be maintained for the life of the project, so it's not all that unusual for this specific question.
I'd like to introduce Connie Franzer. She's a White Lake area resident who obtained a Bachelor of Science in Horticulture at Michigan State University and Master of Science in terrestrial ecology. Connie's worked for the U of M Botanical Gardens for over twenty-six years. In her later years, she was allowed to meld her horticulture training with her ecology education experience with native plants. After retirement, she was contracted, she contracted with the Pollinator Partnership as the Michigan Project Wingspan State Coordinator managing statewide grassroots native seed collection project, and as their Michigan NRCS Pollinator Liaison, doing outreach on the benefits of native plants and crops. She now gives presentations on native plants to garden clubs, environmental organizations, and conservation districts, and is acting president of the Wild Ones West Michigan Shore of Prairie Chapter. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be of service, and I'll carry on. I reviewed the vegetative management plan as it was written by the Applied Ecological Services, and, and it was found in Appendix G of the SUP application. The intention that I took and it was found in an N S P application. The intention that I took this on was to look for adherence to best management practices of native vegetation installation and maintenance, and if possible, suggest other BMPs, best management practices, to ensure that the creation of the native species habitat was at the highest standard. And the BMPs is pertaining to native species plantings that support wildlife creation, development, and sustainability on solar array sites. The review that I wrote, and I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it yet, but I'll assume that maybe you haven't, or you need to, maybe I need to explain it, because sometimes I'm too close to the project and I might not make sense. So, as it's written, I did the review as the vegetative management plan was written. I put page numbers so that you could follow through the review, their vegetative management practice. And anytime that I did a direct code, I did it in a italicized fashion. And every item that I bring to your attention, I gave it lots of references. I have to say that in order to do this project, I spent 33 hours doing a literature review on this subject. I want to set the stage. Vegetative management plan as it defined is summed up here by the Minnesota Natural Resources. They are what everybody, who everybody looks to to have a good vegetative management plan. It will pinpoint site characteristics, goals, and management needs, and it will have clear goals and objectives for vegetative management. And all these things, site preparation, planting, seed mixes, seeding methods, management methods during and after establishment, monitoring and recording, and it will address adaptive management if it's needed. And all of this is done to successfully install and manage and have a sustainable installation. So, I keep hearing about Public Act 230 or 233, but also there's a Public Act 230 that was, became effective in 2024. And it says in solar, let me back up, PA 23 is a law that modifies the rules for solar energy projects on the farmland enrolled in PA 116. And so, solar array projects can occur on the PA 116 lands if it's designed, planted, and maintained with ground cover that achieves a score at least 76 on the Michigan Pollinator Habitat Planning Scorecard for solar sites, or it's designed, planted, and maintained in compliance with the NRCS, that's the Natural Resources Conservation Service Cover Standard 327. So, one or the other has to occur. When we look at the MSU Scorecard, it's measurable assessment, it guides planning and management, and objectively measured by assigning scores for different aspects of pollinator habitat. So, if you look on this side, there's scores for site planning, the detailed plant establishment plan. There are scores that if there's vegetative weeds managed prior to seeding. There's also scores, high scores, for mitigating insect risk. There's planting scores. There's higher scores for more species, more diversity, higher dominos gets higher scores, and higher scores that if you, if there's plans to have bloom for spring, summer, and fall. The conservation practice of 327 is about establishment and maintenance. The express purpose of this is to enhance wildlife, pollinator, and beneficial organism habitat with a diverse mix of grasses and forbs, that's flowering plants, to promote biodiversity. There are approved habitat appraisal guides, evaluation tools, and worksheets for each state. So, if you look at this diagram about conservation cover, there's a lot of direct effects. There's indirect effects, and there's cumulative direct effects. And each one of these could be a reason why you would have a conservation cover. But if you look on the right-hand side, one of them is to have a positive or increased wildlife food and cover, and the indirect effect of that is additional wildlife habitat. There'll be less habitat fragmentation and increased biodiversity. So, let's look at page one. Just like we said, if we were to cover this much acres, and I think that doesn't jive with some of the other numbers, so I just brought that to your attention, that maybe that doesn't go with the other parts of the permit, that it will establish vegetative cover, will comply with all permits and regulations, but they don't mention PA 230, or the fact that there's going to be some land under PA 116, and with that, the MSU Scorecard or the conservation practice. They also said it's a working document, and new revisions will be made as new information is given or obtained. And to me, that at best is adapted, or at worst, it's unfinished document. They also said that a desktop review showed 25% hybrid soil, and because of that, they created three native species mixes. I noticed there was no directive to say that the desktop review would be followed up with ground proofing on the site for soil or drainage examination. And the seed mixes were based on 25% of the soils. There wasn't any mention about the other 75% soils. And so, because of living next to the site, knowing some of the soils in the area, knowing that some of it's farmed, some of it's been drained by piercing drain, artificially drained, and also there's drain tiles, I got onto the USDA soils app, and I found 25 different soils. Only 2.6% of the soil was hybrid within the land control area. There was 17.8 showing ponding. There's a lot of sand, sandy loam and loamy sand, horizons of significant depth. So, I'm thinking there should have been some more upland species added to their mix. And there's no mention of using a Michigan seed company or enlisting a local seed contractor. The three mixes will be prepared to design whether the solar employs mowing or grazing with sheep for perpetual maintenance, and a scalable rotational grazing unit that they offer, the 16 acres divided by four acre paddocks. So, within that unit, each paddock, the sheep have to be moved at a prescribed time. So, I scaled that up, and that would result in about 100 grazing units, 400 paddocks each needing water source. They also said, if planted in the spring, seeds shall be properly stratified or scarified to break seed dormancy. This is not best management practice for lots of different reasons, and I enumerated that in my review of why that is. The site preparation part on page two clearly does not establish good best management practice goals. There's no familiar mention of familiarizing themselves with the previous land use and herbicide applications. That's important because herbicides can have a residual factor and interfere with native seed germination. There's nothing about removing existing vegetation prior to seeding. There's nor talk about what the best conditions it would be for a seed bed prior to seeding to have that good seed-to-soil contact. There's an outdated USDA weed noxious plant list, and lack of detail on the seeding methods. Good site preparation is critical, and perhaps the most important step to successful establishment of pollinator habitat. And it's important to ensure that the site is prepared for seeding. And I'm not going through all the parts of the thing, which is getting some of the main things concerning. If possible, grazing should not occur in the establishment phase. But if grazing must occur, I got to ask, why would grazing must have to occur? And grazing during establishment phase, which is the first three years of establishment, is not a best management practice. Sheep chewed down the vegetation to a much lower standard than if you were going to mow it during the establishment phase, which is important that you mow it, and usually that height is anywhere from eight to 12 inches. I don't know why they would even consider it to be establishment phase. And at the end, they're talking about annual statewide haying, a preferred method, or mowing to a height every year, annual. Mowing or haying on an annual basis is not a best management practice of long-term management. During long-term management, it's what you need to do is mimic what happened in prairies and grasslands. And that was usually done, the best management practice is to disturb, and that's what it is, disturbance regime, and you disturb one-third of the site at a time. So, one-third of the site is being disturbed every three years. And that's done mostly because too much pressure of disturbance is going to destroy the native plant, the native planting. And having it happen every so often, though, is very important. It increases flowers, and it keeps the ecosystem healthy. But annual mowing most of all disturbs me because it does not respect the best management practice of refugia. Refugia is land that's left undisturbed so that the undisturbed population of insects can repopulate the disturbed area. So, if you disturb the whole area, you have disturbed all the insects, and the site becomes functionally and structurally compromised. Should they enter into a haying partnership, the seed mixes might have to be reviewed or potentially revised to meet local agricultural needs. That should, I don't know, I don't know how to say this, nicely, potentially revise seed mixes for agricultural needs is not in line with PA 230, and it should be removed. That should be removed. And if they go with the conservation practice of 327, it does not apply to planting for forage production. Vegetative quality targets, I love the fact that they want a diverse plant community dominated by native species. But again, no mention, it just says permits and regulations. There is no mention, specific mention of PA 230 or the conservation practice of 327. There's no monitoring or assessment or measurable guidelines given. So, that later, right underneath that native vegetative target, they say seven or more species of graminoids, those are grasses or anything that looks and acts like a grass, and six or more species of planted native forbs or flowering plants. Now, that means that it's graminoid heavy, which kind of goes against best management practices. But they're also saying that, well, we'll tolerate seven of these and six of that. So, if they use the scorecard later to monitor and assess the progress, they're going to lose valuable points. I am concerned that there is no documentation for monitoring, appraising, or assessment for long-term success, and I am concerned that there is no mention about pesticide drift. Usually, a vegetative management plan will talk about how to mitigate potential pesticide drift from adjacent agricultural lands and private residencies by the way of vegetative screening or setbacks. It's explicit in the CC 327, and the Pollinator Habitat Scorecard assigns positive 20 points if it's registered on the DriftWatch.com website. In the review summary, there are parts of the vegetative management practice that I liked, and they are all described here and in your review. However, when I look back at a good vegetative management plan as defined, looking at pinpoint site characteristics, goals and management needs, clear goals and objectives, monitoring, reporting, and installation sustainability, I have to say that the vegetative management plan lacked in sensitivity of native plant ground cover diversity for wildlife and goals of a sustainable and resilient native species planting. It had erroneous information and suggestions and omissions of best management practices, and lacked detail in some sections. So, I believe that it was rooted hastily and in a cursory fashion, does not seriously address all best management practices to ensure the sustainability of the project that would result in those positive, direct and indirect and cumulative effects. It lacks clear objectives and intentions and specific actionable and measurable goals. And so, I conclude that it is not comprehensive, nor is it a finished document. And I have to say that without embracing best management practices, native seed installation and maintenance, we will miss an opportunity to create a sustainable, resilient habitat for bees, butterflies, and other wildlife that's clearly an intention of your ordinance, and also the Michigan PA 23. And if you want to see the scorecard, and I scored it, they got 19, and they're supposed to get at least 76.
Do you want to make some questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Connie. Can we move on to new business? We have a data mining data center of the board approved a six-month moratorium. We develop and recommend an ordinance to the board. We have shared three sample ordinances, and over the next several months, we will be reviewing those. Moving on to second.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes.
You know, I have an article, if anybody wants to see it, about a proposed development in Minnesota that I believe Geronimo is doing, a multi-billion dollar solar wind linked to a data center. When we have talked to Geronimo about why they didn't want to locate on the Comores property, what we were told is that they had talked to Comores and had a non-disclosure agreement. I just want to, I have no proof, and I have no knowledge of anything. I want to make that clear. What I also want to make clear is that Geronimo has been very invasive. What I also want to make clear is that Geronimo has been very evasive, not very disclosing, and not very cooperative or forthcoming in their information. And we might look to our Minnesota neighbors to see a proposed project that would draw the energy enough, what the article said, to power a million homes. I think this is a serious issue for us. Again, I want to say, I have no knowledge that that's what's happening, but I also have no knowledge, and when we've asked the questions, no confirmation that that's not happening.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to zoning administrator for Bush Media, I talked to him today, he's not able to be here, he has no update. White River Township Code Enforcement Officer, John Howell.
Nothing to add for the last one, no.
Okay, no update?
No.
Thank you. White River Township Correspondence, Julie.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Planning Commission member comments?
I have another comment, but I'll let you know for TV.
Anybody else?
I wanted to make a few comments. First of all, Lauren, I wanted to thank you for making available a resource that I found in conjunction with the solar siding and that kind of thing. And I feel like, you know, it's such a complicated process that we're all interested in, that I wanted to just point out an additional resource that I think, you know, if you're not real busy during the holidays, you can take some time to look at these things. This is a joint effort between the University of Michigan and Michigan State and some other entities to, a fairly recent webinar on planning and zoning for solar energy systems. But perhaps more importantly, there is the Graham Sustainability Institute at the University of Michigan who work closely with Eagle and I think provide pretty good overview of the different mechanisms and pathways as to how these projects are handled. So if you want to make a note of that, it's Graham, the practical Graham dot U-Mich dot W. And the forward slash is REA, which stands for Renewable Energy Academy. Now, the Renewable Energy Academy, in looking at this more closely, offers a number of services, which I also wanted to bring up to the commission itself, as well as perhaps to the township board. So at any point in the process, you know, either before or after we render our decision on this application, they are available to organize renewable energy site tours. I've been told that, you know, there's a fest located in Coldheart, it's one of the first in Michigan, that we could go and see and maybe ask about that community, you know, how that came about. But also, they offer free of charge individual assistance to township and county officials without cost and no charge review of zoning ordinances, et cetera. So again, it's Graham dot U-Mich dot E-D-U forward slash REA. Or you can also go to Michigan dot gov forward slash REA, and you'll find that same kind of information there. So I just wanted to alert the commission to that resource, to those resources, and possibly, you know, suggest that we formally contact them for some additional guidance, you know, at some point going forward. And hopefully that may help some of the public also better understand, you know, just how this is all being implemented and it's a complicated situation.
Thank you. Steven?
Yeah. I'd like to follow up on your opening comment, Lauren. We received a letter today from Geronimo in reply to the questions, a number of questions that the planning committee sent to them. And, you know, their comment was, we need to be more detailed. You know, I have to give Geronimo and the law firm credit that have mastered the art of cut and paste. I should be able to remember exactly the one-sentence answer for every single question without detail, though you're asking us for detail. So I just want to say that PA 233, section 226B, which was listed in that letter, is not the only relevant section of PA 233. And Geronimo should know of that, I'll bet they do know of that. And this is either incomplete or duplicitous answers, one of the two. For us, in order to be certain that Geronimo is meeting all the aspects of the law and that the planning commission is doing its due diligence, many questions must be asked and answered. I find it ironic and somewhat humorous that Geronimo dumped two three-inch notebooks full of information on us and gave us 120 days to renew it. Yet now they complain about having to answer a couple of pages of questions. This hardly seems to be acting in good faith. Geronimo is withholding vital information from this commission and delaying and delaying and delaying. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment? Three minutes, and please state your name and interests.
Linda Cundin, 7925 North Old Channel Trail. So with the amount of changes that would take place in our community due to this solar project, I would think that any question that we have, whether or not they think it's relative, they should be willing to answer it. The fact that they do not feel that they have to answer unless it's required makes me suspicious of anything they want to do. This affects a lot of people for many years to come in many different ways. They need to be specific and held to a high standard for whatever they propose.
Thank you. Other comment?
My name's Troy Burkholder, resident of the Piper Township. What a wealth of information on this breeding and vegetative management. It just shows me how much, how detailed this is for this site. I'm still quite concerned that depending on the grading of soil, if the site were not used for solar panels, it would not be suitable for farming at the end of it. So if there's any grading, as they said in question answers, there could be up to 20% of the site that could be graded. That's 315 acres, so that's a lot of soil. Then you talk about the burning. I would like to see it stipulated that if they do move any topsoil, that it be replaced to the equivalent depth so that any future use could be used for farming, basically leave it in as good a form as you left it, as you found it. And my concern is that they do grade, and the ground has to be established. You talk about the impermeable surfaces, these solar panels are like a long shed with runoff. And so I'd like to see the ground cover established before the setup, all of these solar panels. I'm just concerned between the erosion, future use, and thanks to the people, we put a lot more time into it than I did.
Thank you. Other comment?
Hi, cargo 10304, Ossie Hill Road. And I want to thank you all for the due diligence here in invitee. These, you know, local and well-informed sources of information that come and help review this application, this is such a tremendous burden on you as the planning commission. And I just want to thank you for the energy that you've put forward to help unmet this as thoroughly as you can. I've been, you know, just unsurprisingly disappointed with how Geronimo has responded to our request for additional information. You know, how many times are we going to hear that they don't think that this is something that's obligated through PA 233? I don't know who records that, you know, who decides if we think that it's really important for us to make a decision, but they don't think that the act requires them to respond to those questions, how do we, you know, how do we effectively evaluate their application? And I think the skepticism that I, you know, that I sense in the community here is really appropriately, really appropriately placed. You know, we've got great local experts here who are providing ways to make this fit better in our community, and they're essentially, you know, being disregarded, and I think that's shameful. And I think it also fits with the ethos, which seems to be, you know, we're coming in on the heels of PA 233, which we paid for and designed, and you guys are just all screwed. So just, well, just let it. And I just, I just want to thank you all for the energy that you're putting forward, trying to push back on this, and I want to just say, don't go changing, all right? I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Go ahead.
Jessica Huckinson, 8713, echoing others who spoke, thank you for all of the work, many, many hundreds of ours you've all put into the research that you've done. And I want to just echo comments of other residents, which is that these guys had claim in that they want to work within our community. They did the open house at the school last year and said, well, we really want to work with your community, but they, they say, well, we can't answer questions in the format of these meetings, so our only opportunity to get answers from them is for us to ask in writing and then them respond. And they refuse to respond, or they respond with, you know, page after page of the copy and pasted comments that they made. And I just want to say that it's, you know, this PA 233, they believe that it's given them just like an open market on every acre of farmland in the state and/or maybe every acre of open land in the state. And, you know, we have to believe that there's still something that we can do as residents. People call us NIMBY, but I call us people who love our community and want to protect it. And nobody is going to protect us except us. Nobody's going to come in on a white horse and help our community get through this. So I'm so incredibly moved and, and just thankful for the local people who have done so much to inform themselves and have given us so much of their expertise and time and knowledge and shared it with all of us so that we are all better informed and better able to ask the right questions and demand the answers. So thank you to everybody here who's done that for us, and thank you to all of you for meeting it possible.
Thank you.
Stu Cho, 5955 Islas Road. My name is Talia, we put in a solar array a few years back and did find a lot of, some of the problems were brought up today. And one was, what you were saying here in terms of, they just, when they leveled it off so they could put their stray line arrays that are, they just piled the topsoil into the divots and left the subswell to try to be established with plantings later. Another is the, especially along Sittin' Row, the plantings that they tried to, that they, they've been replanting a little bit, that, you know, this stuff got mowed down and, you know, it's, it's sort of haphazard. But so that, that's that, and there was a third thing, I can't think of right now, but thank you for all you're doing, and I think it's, we can look just into the next township and see an idea of what's going on. Originally, we're going to put fencing wise, ugly fence, what do you call it, chain link fence, you know, luckily we got that changed, but there have been, there were some serious erosion problems, especially down in the old Brothers restaurant area in the first couple of years. And one of the last things I want to say is the fact that we just cleaned out Pearson Creek Drain. And I want to thank you as a township for supporting your farmers in the assessment that they receive from this, which is, you know, it was pretty phenomenal, a surprise. And for all the work they did with Pearson Creek Drain, I'd hate to see that get nullified by a lot of soil runoff filling up again. And, you know, at the very end, there happens to be all these valleys, you know, it's just like, we're trying to save that too. So I'm really worried about the runoff in the first couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment?
Mary Jo Ern, 7044 Old Channel Trail. I'm just going to echo what everybody else has said about you guys, planning commission, and our board. Thank you for listening to residents and that copy and paste reply from them that it isn't required in PA 233 reminds me of I plead the fifth. This has been four years. They have sat in our front row for four years and not once have they turned around and even looked at us. It's really hard to establish trust. Thank you. It's really hard to establish trust when you sit there and just look forward and don't listen to any of us, don't look at any of us. I think we've all been very respectful. I'm sure you have been in other communities where people are screaming at you, swearing at you, yelling at you. We have always been respectful and we have not gotten it back. And as far as I'm concerned, every question that that board has, that our planning commission has, should be answered. They're voting on it. How are they supposed to vote on your application when you won't answer their questions? It's BS, I'm sorry. I don't know what else to say. It's just, I'm incredulous that we are here four years from now, four years. We've been doing this for four years. How are we ever supposed to trust you? I don't, I don't, I don't think we can. Vote no because you don't have the information, you don't have the full information. It's like buying a book that has a brown paper cover on it. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? One, two, three times. Okay, thank you. Move this to number 12.
I'll move and turn the meeting.
Thank you. Second, I'll support it. Okay, move to second. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you, thank you.